Oh.
This is the east part, yeah.
So this could hit the comments.
Okay.
Near Florida.
This is a small cities committee.
Matches, but I don't.
Meeting on Monday, September eighteenth, two thousand and thirty-three.
I don't know.
It is six sixteen P M.
So my, my brother.
Present, we have Councilman Dave Oliver and Councilman Drake Waldron.
Hanscom Air Force Base.
Okay.
Which is.
So to our agenda, number one, thirty-one Willow Street Project X post facto.
Yeah, Neil.
Vote to approve an additional two hundred and five dollars ex post facto for work completed at thirty-one Willow Street for an unexpected expense related to plywood under the shingles. The current small cities loan is thirty-four thousand four hundred. This will increase to thirty-four thousand six oh five. And the mortgage will be modified to reflect the increase pending city council approval. As further explained in the treasurer's memo dated September thirteenth, two thousand twenty-three.
So moved.
We have a mo.
A motion.
Motion second. Okay, any discussion?
No, sir.
I'm just surprised it wasn't more than two hundred and five dollars.
Yeah.
She's put that one sheet of plywood at that rate, okay.
Right, exactly.
So, uh, okay.
All in favor.
No further, all favored.
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Any opposed?
Oh.
Okay, that passes. Number two. Project number one, four, three dash S C one, eight, zero, one dash two, nine rehab. Vote to authorize project approval to N. I'm sorry, V Nan Fido Roofing and Siding of Meriden, Connecticut. For seventeen thousand three hundred and twenty-three dollars for electrical updates, new roofing and gutters at eighty-four Pleasant Street. Pending city council approval.
So moved.
Motion by Councilman Oliver, second by Councilman Waldron. Any discussion? I checked the property values.
Yeah.
And all the good.
Yeah, I did too.
I don't have the final.
There's. Oh, um, is it in here?
It's not, it's not in here.
No, no.
I just saw what they paid for it.
Yeah.
The way housing prices have gone.
Yes, made all the sense in the world for us to.
So, okay. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Uh, opposed? Okay, that's it. That passes. Okay, three, business by members, vote to consider business by members.
I'm not saying it was.
No, no business, okay? All right, all right, we'll just let that go, motion to adjourn.
Oh, my favorite, so moved.
Second, we're done. And it is six eighteen P M, okay.
Kind of all of our meetings could be this efficient.
I heard about this.
All right, it is now six twenty-nine P M, uh, so I'm going to, uh, call this regular meeting of the city council, N W P C A to order. For the record, today is Monday, September eighteenth, twenty twenty-three. Uh, we have council members participating in person this evening as city hall. Councilman Waldron, Councilman Manichia, Councilwoman Ruette, Councilman Oliver, and Councilman Cavanero. Uh, before we begin the meeting, could we please stand and pledge the flag? Thank you, item one on the agenda this evening, uh, as usual, is, uh, to open the meeting to the public. Do I have a motion in accordance with section four? E of the city council W P C A meeting rules of procedure.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilman Manichia.
Second.
Second by Councilman Waldron, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And we're open to the public, is there anyone from the public wishing to address the board at this time?
Good evening, Steve Ibane. Uh, City of Torrington. Thank you for being here. Uh, I just want to comment on the World Cleanup Day that happened this past Saturday. Uh, great effort by several groups sponsored by the city and the Conservation Commission, so thank you again for sponsoring that. And, uh, led by Nate Nardi Cyrus. Uh, so we, we had several groups, uh, participate in this, uh, the Torrington Trails Network and the Conservation Commission, uh, amongst others, uh, at this, uh, event. So all sorts of people from around town cleaned up garbage. Uh, we, uh, went around collecting it, we filled up a dumpster. Um, I, I want to point out, uh, special praise for Tom Keneffer that's in our audience tonight. Uh, he spent, uh, earlier in a week, uh, collecting the garbage, uh, also, uh, making up site maps that identified where we could, uh, go and clean up, and we, we focused on the Red Mountain Trail this week, um, for this event. So we had the dumpster around the Town Fair Tire area and, uh, that plaza ownership, uh, worked with the Conservation Commission to, uh, place that dumpster there and clean up the trails in that area. So it, it had good focus on the Red Mountain Trail area that's, uh, slated, uh, to be developed, and it was a very positive, uh, event. Uh, cleaning up, uh, a lot of, uh, debris, uh, left behind on, on the trails over time. So thank you again, uh, for helping to sponsor that. Uh, a second item I, I want to comment on is, um, a, a flag ordinance. Uh, I'm hoping that we could have a robust discussion, if not at this meeting, it's, uh, at, at a future meeting, uh, to discuss, uh, basically a flag ordinance, so that we have defined rules over, uh, what groups, uh, are authorized to flag a fly, in, fly a flag at our city hall. So, uh, i- if we don't discuss it today, uh, hopefully at a future event. And we, we could share some other, uh, language for ordinance that could be, um, used by, that, that we see in other municipal groups that have adopted, uh, such ordinances around this. Thank you.
Thank you, still open to the public if there are other members of the public wishing to address the board? Seeing and hearing none, we'll move on to item two. Item two, I will entertain a motion to accept the regular meeting minutes from September fifth. Twenty, thank you, Councilman Oliver.
Second.
Second by Councilman Manichia, are there questions or comments on the minutes? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Item three is a presentation, so, uh, for purposes of, uh, managing the discussion, I'll entertain a motion to open the meeting for, uh, presentation by Dale Knapp. During that motion.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilman Waldron, and second by Councilman Manichia, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we're open. And, oh, there you are. Turn it off to Jamie Secora first.
Uh, Jamie Secora, Facilities Manager, um, I want to bring up and introduce, uh, Dale Knapp, he's from Waldron Renewables. This is about a land lease for battery storage. He can go through a presentation.
Thank you, Jamie. Uh, evening, Mayor, members of the city council, happy to be here in front of you again this evening, uh, to revisit what we discussed, uh, a few months back, uh, our interest in a lease of some city-owned property, uh, by the old landfill for the purpose of a battery storage facility that would interconnect on to the Connecticut Light and Power, um, grid, right off, um, South Main Street. Um, so I wanted to start by kind of giving you a broad overview of sort of what's happening dynamically here in Connecticut and across New England. And so here, I think, is a kind of a driving quote, quote, that, um, sort of outlines the need for storage. And so here in Connecticut, I think the state has done a great job, um, sort of creating domestic opportunities to provide the renewable resources that, you know, you need, uh, and this program is, is trying to drive the storage that will help, you know, kind of grow the local economy, uh, improve, uh, you know, the region's ability, specifically Connecticut's, to meeting renewable energy goals, uh, while, you know, providing local jobs and investment in communities like the city of Torrington. Um, so this is a quote, uh, from the governor. And I won't read it. So, um, back to kind of this regional overview, you know, one of the things that's happening in New England now, uh, that hasn't happened, and I think twenty years ago, if you told me it was gonna happen, I might not have believed you, is there are times where we produce more renewable energy than we consume. And so, you know, that's kind of a new paradigm. And so what these storage facilities, uh, are going to do is provide essentially a transmission resource, so we can store that excess generation and kind of save it for the rainy day when we do have a capacity event, decreasing our need to rely on fossil fuel peaker plants. And so, you know, we have, um, I live in Portland, Maine, but I've been doing work, you know, all over New Eng- New England for years, we have an oil-fired, um, plant just north of Portland. If you've ever been up ninety-five, you've probably seen that big smokestack uh, north of Portland, if you haven't, you'll see it, it's, it's quite obvious. And so, you know, the intent here is to reduce our need for those capacity resources, um, because we pay to keep them sort of hovering, ready to go when and if we need them. And when we do need them, we play, pay an incredible premium, um, for that power. And so, uh, you know, Connecticut is, is kind of on the leading edge of this in New England. Uh, New York and California have done a lot, uh, in this space, uh, but Connecticut is, is doing a lot now. And so, um, the Integrated Resource Plan, um, kind of outlines, um, the regional need for storage as part of the energy mix here, uh, in Connecticut. And so targets have been set, I didn't include them on this slide. But, you know, there's a regional target of about three hundred megawatts by twenty twenty-four. I think there are about forty-six megawatts of installed storage in the state right now. They want to hit six hundred and fifty megawatts by twenty-seven, and at least a gigawatt, um, by twenty thirty. And so the project we're talking about here, uh, you know, could account for, we hope, between a hundred and a hundred and fifty megawatts, um, of that utility scale, storage. And please stop me if you have questions during my rambling on. So, again, I just wanted to provide kind of an overview visually, so you can see what these facilities look like. Um, essentially, they're like a storage facility in this clicker. Um, it's just a lot more of it. So, um, you know, you see the storage cells, they're packed into racks, in, in the racks go into these basically shipping containers that are, uh, pre-designed. And so they kind of roll off, um, pre-wired, so they're easy, uh, to interconnect, they'll go on, like a crushed stone area with a concrete pad. Um, there's a, what's called a battery management system integrated, um, and that's a, a key component of what keeps these monitored twenty-four seven, so if there's any kind of a fault, uh, it can be shut down or someone can be dispatched, uh, to address the issue, uh, immediately. So here are some other photos, this is, uh, a project in Massachusetts. And so you can see, um, I can see it right in front of me too, um. They're, they're fairly, um, nondescript, this one is not within storage containers, but, um, yeah, this is, this is what they look like. So I think, um, you'll remember this slide, uh, from the last presentation, um, we're targeting a small area that falls, you know, outside of the landfill cap, uh, just up slope from the Torrington substation, you can see it coming down in the, the lower corner there. I've walked the site, uh, or I've walked up the line, we've had some discussions initially, uh, with Connecticut Light and Power on how we could interconnect at this facility. We've engaged with a substation engineering firm since I was here in front of you last, um, to kind of get an idea of what our cost, um, to interconnect would be, and we're still feeling really good about the project. So, just to kind of summarize, again, what I've already been discussing here, um, interconnection, uh, on the ever-source grid, the substation we're looking at here is, has a strategic advantage kind of regionally to serve as a capacity resource. Um, we had, uh, a transmission engineer look at the entire state of Connecticut, and we've identified sort of three nodes that would best serve, um, the grid as a capacity resource. And, you know, lucky for Torrington, Torrington's at the top of that list. So again, we've planned to incite, planned to cite the entire facility, um, on city-owned property. Um, again, if we are successful with this lease, we have a lot more work to do, uh, kind of demonstrating, uh, through engineering and design, um, that the facility would not present, you know, a, a risk, um, to the town or the environment. We thought that this site also, um, again, thinking about kind of least environmentally damaging practical alternative to meet the need, which is a hundred and fifty megawatt storage facility, placing it on land that's been previously altered or disturbed, uh, kind of an industrial area, you know, we're not expecting to run into any sensitive receptors, um, environmental or, or human. Um, we'll certainly have to do, uh, due diligence as part of our design and permitting process. But, you know, based on an initial screening, um, nothing kind of came up. Um, we hope also to use some of the existing, uh, vegetation kind of on the east side of the site to screen, um, the facility, so you'd probably have to be running your ATV up that hill, um, to get a close look at it. Obviously, um, the landfill area is not public, um, to my knowledge, and so it would be hard, hard to see, um, from the surrounding area, which is also important. So, um, to kind of revisit the financial proposal we've put, uh, in front of the city, the development period, uh, we would seek, um, for an option to lease would run six years. Um, we were willing to pay sort of five thousand dollars per year to hold that option while we invest, you know, significant time and money in designing, uh, the facility as well as securing the utility interconnection to allow the project to proceed. Uh, during operations, we would propose a lease period of forty years, um, with a six thousand dollar per acre per year payment, uh, with a thirty thousand, uh, dollar a year minimum guaranteed. If we use more acreage, certainly we'd have to pay for it. If we use less acreage, we're still bound, um, to that minimum payment that escalates, uh, two percent every year for the life of the lease. So our rough math, um, turns out about one point four seven five million dollars in lease payments over the life of the project that would go, um, to the city. And sort of a a rough table kind of breaking it down, we do believe that the the development period will run at least four, if not five, uh, years. Typically, we seek a five-year term, but, um, with everything that's happening in Connecticut right now, we think that it's going to take a little bit longer, um, to secure and have the substation upgrades built, uh, that will be needed to interconnect the facility. So I'll revisit sort of who Walden is, uh, we've been in business since two thousand and eleven. Um, we have several, uh, twenty megawatt projects under construction, uh, in the state of Maine right now. We are an owner, uh, operator, as well as a developer. And, uh, we have a team of about fourteen. Uh, we're going through, uh, an E P C procurement right now, uh, to construct a facility in Leeds. And so, um, we kind of do it all, I guess. So I figured it'd be worth touching on, uh, some common questions that we get when we present, um, on these types of facilities, uh, across the region. Though a lot of times we get concern a- around sort of safety, you know, are these safe, will they cause fires, will they sort of overheat and explode? Um, it can happen. But the odds of it happening are exceedingly rare. So the National Fire Protection Association, um, calls the failure rate of a lithium ion battery, it's about one in twenty-five million. Maybe going up as high as one in forty. Keep in mind, not to mislead you with this, this facility will have, uh, you know, hundreds of thousands of cells. So while failure is exceedingly rare, you know, it can happen. Um, the Connecticut Uniform Fire Prevention Code has a number of standards that this facility would be required to meet, that kind of alleviate those risks. And so, um, the pad image that you saw, kind of separating it from, um, trees and other, um, flammable things is part, proper sighting is part of safety, uh, tied to this. Uh, obviously, the explosive storage on the other side of the transmission line, you would certainly want to have, um, you know, plenty of setbacks from that, but clearly it's an industrial area, so it's used to store, you know, um, far more dangerous equipment. Um, lithium ion batteries, uh, are not the same as what you would might think of in terms of your Samsung cellphone catching on fire when you get on a plane, uh, it's a very different technology. Water is actually safe and probably the most effective, um, firefighting tool that we have with these facilities. Um, I mentioned it earlier, the battery management system that's in place will monitor this facility, you know, twenty-four seven. So we will have the ability to shut it down, the grid operator would also have the ability to disconnect it. There's an unsafe operating condition, and so, you know, there's multiple contingencies, you know, if there's a safety issue. And, you know, the, that system is so sophisticated, it will take you to the rack, you know, the cell, uh, that's causing a fault. So in terms of emergency spron- response, what you do, you know, if there's an issue, um, we provide training to local mu- emergency services and have a, a plan in place prior to operation of any of the facilities that we construct. Um, you know, your firefighters, I expect, are already well-trained and would know, you know, how to handle a, a fire of this type, but, you know, at our cost and, and at our, I guess it's our responsibility to make sure that those responsible, um, for addressing a situation out there receive the proper training. Um, I think one item of note, um, sometimes we get, um, interest in sort of the, um, sort of the foam, the foam firefighting, um, pre-designed sort of, uh, fire retardant foam that would be inside of the storage container. Um, some facilities do indeed, uh, contain such devices, but sometimes, um, those can be more environmentally damaging than just straight, straight water use. You know, we haven't quite reached a point where we have a design certainly to share, but I expect, I don't expect that will be part of the permit review process, um, as we continue to design, uh, the project moving forward. Um, another concern often we get are, is around recycling and decommissioning. So what happens at the end of the project's useful life? Um, you know, battery recycling is already happening in Connecticut, and it will continue to grow across this region as, you know, our market shifts and these projects become more commonplace. We commit on every project to bond, sort of fully fund a decommissioning plan prior to putting a shovel in the ground. It's within the language of our lease, and so that gives the municipality or the city, um, security that if, for whatever reason, something goes completely awry, um, the funds are there to decommission, uh, the facility if constructed. It is also worth mentioning that, um, ever-source, uh, C L P and U I are, are talking about this issue as they're getting ready to kind of have these resources integrated into their grid, and so they're trying to carve out the right, um, if, for whatever reason, something goes sideways with a facility that they have kind of right of first refusal to incorporate it into their, uh, portfolio, so it truly becomes a grid asset. Uh, in terms of sound, um, there, they do produce, um, some noise, but where the project is cited, uh, it would not be audible, you know, from any adjacent receptor. Those are some common questions that we get, are there others? Council, Mayor?
Questions from the council? Go ahead, um, Councilman.
Um, yeah, I have a few. But, um, going to the fire, is the, the, those, uh, lithium ion batteries have been known to cause, um, fires that take lots of time and lots of water to put out. Um, more than probably a lot of other things that firefighters come across these days, and they're far more dangerous. So is there anything in the lease where it would be a recovery to the city of Torrington if there's a fire?
We do carry insurance on the facility to address, address those needs, and if, if during kind of legal review, you think that a slightly higher, um, incident number might be appropriate, but we do, you know, we're interested in ensuring the facility to level where, you know, it can be repaired, you know, and all costs are covered. And that, that is a clause in our, our stamp.
Um, can I ask more, or should we?
Please, no, you have the floor.
Um, and, um, also on that site, um, I don't know if you can answer this question if you ask, so if the, if there were a fire, yes, I'm concerned about the fire because
Sure.
we have, uh, you know, people involved and people get hurt and they're, uh, uh, because of the, the type of units they are, they are a little more dangerous than, uh, you know, trees burning. So on that site was an old dump site, so if the fire were to expand beyond that site because of dry vegetation, let's say, are there other combustibles on the site that might then go up?
Tough for me to answer that question kind of broadly, uh, certainly we would conduct a phase one environmental site assessment, and obviously there's a lot of documented history tied to that site. One of the keys would be the perimeter. So the site would be designed to contain the facility so that in the event of even sort of a catastrophic failure, it would remain contained kind of to the, to the crushed stone area immediately surrounding it.
Thank you.
And, and we will without a doubt, spend a great deal of money, you know, through the design engineering process, as well as kind of developing an operations and management plan. We would hope in, uh, consultation with local mu- emergency services here in the city.
Thank you.
Uh, Councilwoman Ruette?
I think just to follow up, um, I would assume, you know, Jamie and, and Ray would be able to answer the combustible, you know, question that you have, but also the question about access to the location and, um, whether, you know, that we're not out that far, whether our fire trucks can actually, you know, have easy access to that area in case of fire. Um, and I, I would assume, um, you know, our police, our fire chief would say that we've, you know, got the training, um, completed and also, you know, be a part of the process of developing this, um, since the risk of, of fire is so high.
Well, I would, there is a risk, but it is certainly no higher than any of the other commercial facilities, kind of along South Main Street, if anything, it very well is less.
Yeah, you said one to twenty-five million if I, you know, so I
Correct.
I, you know, certainly respect that, but I think just as a, uh,
Sure, we definitely want to address it.
Yeah. So I'm assuming those things are happening there.
Sure, we'd, um, obviously, any construction that happens requires permitting and it requires, um, site review and all the departments weigh in on that, everything, everyone from engineering to the fire department, police department, obviously Public Works. But, uh,
Thank you.
There is a, an approval process that would have to proceed. Other questions from the council?
Um, so in the event that something happens, uh, unfortunately to the, uh, facility and whether it's fire, flood, or sorry, fire or flood, what have you, uh, who's responsible, who's responsible for the cleanup and what type of insurances would be involved in that? I would assume that, uh, because of the nature of what this is, it might be, it would require a specialty kind of insurance policy or coverage of some kind. So, um, not only is, um, my question regarding who's responsible for the cleanup, you know, whether it be Walden or the municipality, I'm assuming it would be you as the tenant.
We are, a hundred percent.
But what are the limits on coverage, um, and who is, who's providing the insurance as well? Um, above and beyond that, in the event of contamination where a site needs to be remediated, um, would you then, I'm, I'm assuming you would then be responsible for cleaning up anything that would seep or spread beyond the rented property, the leased property?
Absolutely, you know, one great thing about New England is we've come a long way since we had sort of tanneries and woolen mills and other sort of facilities on our rivers that had lasting impacts, and then when you turn around, the responsible party can't be found. So our lease clauses are very clear in that we, as the facility operator, the facility itself is financially responsible to address any impacts that it would cause, and we
City then would not be.
No.
We have, we're basically indemnified.
Yes, and so in, in, in there's, there is, you know, robust insurance that we pay for and carry tied to the facility, because, you know, the, the key to keep in mind here is we have a vested interest, if, you know, these projects have, are a huge capital expense, you know? And so if we build it and we're operating it, we want to keep it, uh, keep it that way. And so we have a vested interest in maintaining the facility, um, keeping operating safely, and if there is an incident, you know, we are, uh, responsible to address the, the issue.
What is the actual capital outlay that would be involved in this? Um, I mean, is it a ten million dollar project, is it a two hundred, is it a two million dollar bill?
It's probably close to a hundred million dollar facility. And so, you know, in addition to lease payments, there is, I mean, again, we'd have to work it out because it's on city land, but that facility itself has taxable value. And so there would be additional, significant additional revenues heading, uh, to the city, um, as property tax.
And that's not included in the?
That is not included, this is just purely a lease, because again, we haven't reached a point where we've designed the facility so that we have identified, you know, what the capex is, that's going to take us, you know, probably three years, so this is, I think I mentioned the last time I was here, you know, step one out of six hundred and eighty-five, maybe more.
So I'm just curious, what, what kind of tax revenue would be involved in this, or did I miss that chart?
Excuse me, it wasn't in the chart, personal property. So this obviously is a, with the lack of a better word, like a Conex box. With personal property contained in it, so it would be taxable as personal property.
Yep.
Thank you.
And again, we'd have to work with, you know, your local assessor to sort out exactly how that would work, but we are walking into this. Fully expecting to pay personal property tax on this facility.
Thank you. I have an additional question if nobody else has.
Let me, yeah, Councilman Kevin, questions? All right, go ahead. All right, Councilman Maniche.
How how much land is usable for? This project, if you were to expand, so you have one. The the initial site and then if it's successful, is there more property for you to expand on?
Based on our current analysis of the sort of the transmission system locally, that's kind of what could be injected here at a max. So we're going to try and take, you know, the remaining capacity that's available at that substation for the purposes of storage. Now, again, this is transmission level, not distribution level. So you would certainly have room in the city of Torrington for more small scale projects that connect. Kind of at a roadside distribution level. But you know, our plan here would be to enter into a lease agreement, design a facility, you know, once we hit operations. That's what's there, you know, for the forty year life of the lease. We would not, you know, again. I am not a fortune teller, so in twenty years, you know, something could potentially change, but from where we sit today. Now, once it's up and operational, we expect to continue running it on the same exact footprint for the life of the project.
Thank you.
Councilman Kevin.
Couple of really basic questions. You're you're in the business of storage, not generations.
We do both.
You do both.
So we. This site will only store power. So the. I don't want to get too deep into the weeds because I go. Along a long time on this topic, but sort of our energy markets have shifted in that we we've seen sort of. Generation co-located with storage, but we've reached a point where we need. Storage assets that are much larger, that can eject. Significant amount of power into the grid to to kind of address these two to four hour. Sort of peak demands that we see in the region. And it essentially, you know, the driver across ice in New England is these become a dispatchable grid resource. So the system operator. Is kind of looking forward to try and figure out, you know, where they need the power and when they need it. Maybe we have a storm, a line goes down, plant isn't operational. It just gives them another tool to continue kind of the safe, reliable and, you know, affordable delivery of power to all of us.
Is it, what's the path back to CL? It's going just to CLP? Is that what you said?
Yep. Can I get line power?
Back as under the ground as it is.
It would be small overhead poles down to the tracks. So wooden poles, the same kind of thing. You'd see roadside. Wooden pole, crossbar on the top.
Why would those be less susceptible in catastrophic storm situation from going down than? The regular grid. You know what I'm saying? Wouldn't those be just as vulnerable as I just?
Sure.
Seems like the idea of this is to have to be available.
Yes.
Why is that of the same quality or type?
Well, it's a it's a dispatchable resource that's four hundred feet away from the transmission system. And so once you get it into the substation, you step it up to a larger voltage and then it's it's a power superhighway. That's why citing it proximate to the substation creates a more reliable dispatchable resource.
Yeah, I was only thinking, you know, I mean, everybody's extremely aware now of, you know. The effects of climate change and the radical this is and, you know, I mean, we're hearing. You know, going forward, it's going to get worse.
Sure.
Better and we're hearing tales and stories of, you know, local, small tornadoes and such. I lived through one in Bristol, whenever that was eight years ago, I was there for that. In that scenario, if if there's, in that scenario, if if poles go down in Torrington, your pole will go down and so the storage. Is not doing anybody any good, right?
I mean, we'll work with eversource to identify whether or not they want that line buried. This is all incredibly preliminary. But having that storage facility there, if the big transmission lines coming.
Storage facility to the main grid itself seems. I don't know, just.
Sure. One thing that's definitely worth mentioning is that the large transmission lines that do come into Torrington that are highly susceptible to the weather events that you described. If one of those goes down. This facility could interconnected to the substation, it would feed. Local demand, so it doesn't go on to the distribution system, it connects at transmission level, but it can trickle down. So in the event that the transmission lines coming into Torrington went down. This dispatchable battery could address that need.
All right, let me ask you, how how did you, how many cities are you doing this in now? Your company, Walden, I guess?
We're targeting three in Connecticut.
What are the other two? If you don't mind, I.
We haven't. We haven't made outreach yet, sorry.
Okay, well, how did you, how did you arrive at Torrington?
Uh, we hired an electrical engineer to identify where strategically, you know, eversource could use a dispatchable resource of this nature. So it needs to, we need to have. Sort of proximity to the substation with six available acres in an area that wouldn't be immediately next to homes. The other factor is transmission capacity, you know, does the substation have the ability to interconnect the facility and send it kind of further down the line? So again, I'm not an engineer, I'm a scientist, not an engineer, so I can't speak to exactly how they came up with this. Voodoo answer, but that's what they gave us.
All right, a couple more questions. Is this in any way a subsidiary of eversource or your company?
No, we're independent.
Independent, okay. Question following up on some of these other, to me, very. Well, you know, intelligent questions that are being asked. Before, could you, I I missed what you were saying about this, you you made some point about the foam. Wrapping your your. Your storage.
Yeah, so again, we'll have to work with your, you know, local fire department to see what their preference might be. In some instances, you know, that self-contained foam fire suppression. Creates some of the environmental impacts. The other councilman was referencing where you spray water on foam that's been discharged. And then it goes to surface water bodies and creates a much larger issue. Most of the research that's been done has shown that water is the most effective form of fire suppression on these facilities. Again. I'm not saying we wouldn't consider placing foam if directed by your local fire department. We can be very flexible based on, you know, local preference. That was just sort of for your information.
All right, and someone asked a question, I think it was Armin, about a containment plan, that's something that's in the in development.
We would have to, we would produce an operations maintenance and sort of containment plan prior to operation of the facility. Until we sort of designed it.
EMT, emergency services and that's what you said.
Yes, we would have to have sort of a a response plan if X and Y. And they develop, you know, any number of scenarios, if it's injury, if it's fire, it's spill, if it's a tree fall. If it if it's someone who just enters the facility illegally and is injured, like all of those scenarios.
Okay.
Have to be covered.
The forty thousand dollar a year lease, right? Uh, how did you arrive at that number for Torrington? Is it, is it, is it just scalable to what you're doing in other cities or is there something? Plus or minus unique to Torrington? Where did that number come from?
It it's based on sort of energy leases broadly across New England. We look at property values, we look at what the going rate might be for a solar facility, try to scale it so that, you know, we occupy certainly less area. But we don't want. The host landowner to end up with less based on the capacity of the facility.
All right, I assume there's other competitors in the field that you're in right now? I mean, there's other people doing this?
Sure.
Yeah, how did we, Mayor, this is to you, how how did we arrive at this particular vendor?
The vendor contacted us. This was not an RFQ. Or an RFP process.
Okay, well, you know, you're asking for a forty year lease. And. I mean, look at. I I. I I I think you're a highly credible. Presenter of of your your contract, but as as a. As a councilman, I just feel like I'm not prepared to approve this. You want us to approve this tonight, right?
There there is a request in the agenda for approval of the lease. Yes.
You know, for me to say, I I'm representing the people of Torrington for forty years. On this proposal from one vendor, which is going to have major impact, there's still a lot of question marks regarding some of these. You know, very tricky issues about containment, about. You know, the decommissioning costs with those, what realistically, I mean, we've we've just gone through an affordable housing project where. The decontamination of that project, you know, escalated tremendously, okay? I mean, it happened within the last few years here, so we know these costs can escalate dramatically. And I have to think about what I do here as a councilman. How that could possibly play out in. Ten, twenty, thirty, forty years, and I I would just like. I would like to see, before going to approve it, I would like to see a a much more detailed contract from this vendor. And quite frankly, I'd also like to see another vendor, somebody else who's doing this and what those numbers look like. If we're going to do this, let's get, let's get some other people bidding on it.
If you may, Jimmy, if you, Jamie, excuse me, if you could take the microphone, please.
So no other vendors reached out, the vote tonight is to start the process for them to start to do all their due diligence. We can't get those numbers until they invest a boatload of money and time in the site. So all the questions you brought up, we're not even there yet. This is to just get into a contract to say, start to look at it. Where they can say, yes, we're going to allow you to look at the. Six plus acres, similar to what we did for the solar project. There's no solar on that land yet, but we had to enter into some agreement so they can develop it. So this is in the very beginning stages. This is probably ten years maybe before even. Seven, eight years before they put a shovel in the ground to do anything. He has a lot of work to do. To look at the site, bring in civil engineers, environmental engineers to look at everything to then come up with a plan. This is just.
Okay, if if that's what this is, if this is a very preliminary.
Correct.
You're asking the city council to authorize a preliminary investigation to the viability of this project. This agenda item needs to be written differently because that's not how I read this. I am in no way giving authority to move ahead with this. Contract that will then bind us to this particular vendor, period. Okay, I mean, there needs to be a lot more meat on the bones, a lot more questions asked. We need to hear from our fire officials. And our police, but primarily our fire officials about so many of these questions, which could prove to be down the road. That there's an awful lot of of.
We're not at that point yet to even get to those questions to be asked until he does more development.
Agenda needs to be presented differently. This is an exploratory, an approval for an exploratory. Authority to to approve an exploratory development of a proposal, something along those lines. This reads much more like we are giving the mayor herself or the the mayor, the mayor's office the right to negotiate this contract. And I I can't get as an elected official and a representative of. Of the people of Torrington today and hopefully down the road, I can't just give up. My responsible, my responsible oversight of this large of a project. After a. Thirty-five minute presentation and I and I won't do it, so.
Okay.
That's where I stand on the issue. Okay, okay. I hope my other councilman will will follow along with me and. Uh, ask to bring this back in the future, a- ask to bring this back in some other form for approval.
Okay, so my question to Jamie is if what we're really looking for is this first three year, which is a development period. Is that, is that? Like an LOI kind of of situation and then a contract would follow after that?
Yes.
Correct.
Yeah, so the way the way we've structured the lease is it is an option. And so we would need to go through detailed permitting approvals from, you know, site plan, fire department, all of that would need to happen. But what we want is the right to build the project in the future because it's going to cost us tens of millions of dollars to design the facility. Do the due diligence and answer all the questions that you have. And we don't want to invest that money if five years from now. The city of Torrington decides, well. Maybe we'll go with someone else.
I understand from business, from your business point, but absolutely understand where you're coming from. But as again, you know, I'm just the lowly city councilman, but I take my job very seriously. I do, okay? And this is for forty years. This isn't something that's going to be, you know, three, four years down the road, it goes away, we we vote, you know, we, no, 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 no. This is a major commitment to a major vendor that has significant, you know, complications to it. It's it's a complex thing you're building, I get that. And and the risks need to be identified to me with a lot more detail and specificity and I would want. To hear from our our fire people about the kinds of concerns they would have. And then see that the vendor is accounting for these things before I say, before I give my vote to say, okay, let's go with Walden to do this, you know? And quite frankly, no offense, or but you can understand my position as a city councilman. I always prefer to hear from multiple vendors. It helps me assess how much better you are than the other vendors, quite frankly, feel more confident in my vote. And it's the way the process is supposed to work, period. It's not that complicated of a deal. This is too premature for me to vote. To approve this particular agenda item. Okay? So we need to rethink how, what the next step really is. I I'm sure there's a more formal way of writing it up to give you what you need. But yet to maintain control as a city council that we are not fully committed to you as the vendor yet. Okay, we got to find some language to do that. I mean, do you really believe it's it's responsible for any city councilman to just thirty-five minutes? Give you a forty year lease on on a hundred million dollar project that, you know, it's going to give us forty thousand dollars? I mean, maybe that's, maybe that's a drop in the bucket of what this is really worth. I I don't know. I have no way of knowing. I've been chewing on this for forty minutes. It's just not. This is not the way things should be done at this level, quite frankly, and with that.
So. Because the the second part of item three was just this, to entertain a motion to accept the recommendation of the facilities. Manager and the public works director, both of whom have done. The due diligence that you charged them to do as a council. How about if I phrase this or word this? To accept the recommendation of the facilities manager, public works director. To authorize the mayor to act on behalf of the city to negotiate the terms of a contract agreement with Walden Renewables. As further explained in the presentation of September eighteen, twenty twenty-three, and we can bring those terms back to the council for final approval. Does that get us closer to where you want to be?
I I'm looking at the presentation and the key lease terms, you know, on that page eight, you know, is the development period of six years. Five thousand dollars per year allows permitting and utility interconnection. The operations period, you know, and maybe that's the section that would give a little more comfort to. My colleague here, but I feel like. That's what we're looking at, you know, in terms of, you know. The vote that we are asked to give tonight.
This is not a five second project, that's what I'm saying. There's a lot of legwork that goes in.
For six years.
When you talk about tens of millions of dollars, you know, obviously, there's a lot of work that has to go into this. It's a lot of the due diligence, it's the research. We're still working with the solar company, you know, that's that took out an option and lease on the other land up there. These aren't things that happen overnight, so.
But you're you're making my point, Mayor, and you are making my point, Jamie, precisely my point. What makes you think you put all this work into it, you and your team have put all this work into it, you put, what makes you think? That therefore you can just, that the city council is just going to rubber stamp this, that we don't. That we don't have a responsibility to also put our work in as representatives of the people of Torrington. That this is the best, well, you are kind of saying that, that you want, you want some sort of action to go forward after a thirty-five minute discussion. Of a hundred million dollar forty year project. And this is, that to me is is not, it's not fair to us, the city council, it's not responsible for me as a city council.
Asking to be able to entertain.
Come back in two weeks. After, it can come back in two weeks with with a rewritten. Specific that you can give some real thought to how this agenda, so again, to me, in terms of my my demands. One is that it gives you whatever you need in the language to take the next step. Okay, but at the same time allows the city council to ultimately review the contract before final approval of the project. I want to see the the final, I want to know that the fire department is good with this. I want to know that there's no gotchas in any of this.
So if I may though, just just to step back and. The fire department isn't going to be able to tell you based on this thirteen page presentation. They need to see what's actually going to be built there. Walden isn't going to be able to tell us what's going to be built there until they do their diligence and their survey work and their. The all their six years of of due diligence. So.
Nothing being built.
You're not getting, yeah, exactly, you know, so all of this is, this is preliminary. They can't start doing their work until we give them a lease option and lease period. That starts the ball.
Give one vendor a lease option for forty years without hearing from somebody else.
Okay.
Hearing our fire department, our chiefs can at least look at this and then they can answer questions, they can answer Mr. Manisio's question. What what is the possibility that you're building this on a dump site, garbage site, which has highly combustible material to begin with? You know, what? You know, what are the kinds of, the fire chief should be able to inform, okay, us, the city council as representatives of this fair city, the kinds of questions we should be asking of you, okay? That's the proper balance of, of authority here and, 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 and inform uh, and, and process, okay, for moving forward on, on this large. We get, we get people, the, the key people, okay, public works is good with this. I, I wanna hear from, I would like to hear from fire, okay? Because that is a huge, we are talking about major combustibles here. Um, and I would like to hear what they think about this and what we should be considering in moving forward to the next step. So let's get fire, let's get the fire here next, next meeting, right? Then we can vet all, vet all that out.
I don't know that they're gonna be able to tell you anything.
We're talking the forty-year proposal, what the hell.
We're not talking about a forty-year, we're talking about a six-year to start, a six-year so they can do the development. If it's viable with their development, then you entertain into a forty.
There's been a lot of discussion.
All right, yes.
Okay.
Six-year, what's, what's for, what is literally, what is literally two hops, two more city council, one, one, one question. It could be the same meeting, one with fire department there, two weeks, what's really?
I have another council member that has a question and then I'm hearing a, a request to move to the next agenda.
Just one more quick question, so. You get the approval to go out and do your research. Um, then is there a point where you might, where it could possibly, as you're going through the process, after maybe the third year or two and a half, two and a half year where it's like, this is not a viable site and then you just, that's it, right? I mean, I'm just, I'm trying to understand this. You know, so the way that this works across the entire New England region is you cannot pursue interconnection until you have an option. And so during the development period, we've worked with EverSource to secure our grid position. With that in place, we can actually start the due diligence on the project. That means subsurface testing, that means environmental studies, it means boundary survey, it means engineering. And so, you know, like I said, this really is the first step and the interconnection process is incredibly expensive. You know, we're talking about, you know, tens of millions of dollars that we would need to invest to secure the, the right potentially down the road if we're successful in all this due diligence and permitting to secure that grid position. So we do stand to lose whether, you know, get the Q position or not. So there are a lot of unknowns here and part of the process for us as, as a business is we don't wanna invest that tens of millions of dollars unless we have a very clear line of sight to the right to build the project. Because if in year, if at year five, we've been through site plan review, we've got the fire department on board, we've got the interconnection. And then arbitrarily someone decides, they don't like my mustache, you know, we're out all that money. So in, in order to make that investment, we need the right. We need that development period that gives us that option.
And that's what I'm asking for. I understand all that, I've been through.
I, I, there's, it's actually the presentation, I haven't called the sub-motion to this, which I think is where Councilman Cavanero is, where he wants the discussion and the vote to um, to move.
I would like to table this until two weeks from now.
So I hear, am I hearing a table to motion, a motion to table?
We're still on the presentation.
We're on the presentation portion, so, you know, I broke it down to three, three A. So I have a motion to table, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second, um, all in favor of tabling.
Aye.
Aye.
We have three in favor of tabling. Uh, two, excuse me, yes, uh, two. Sure.
We'll call it.
I don't think you need.
I don't, we've got three in favor of tabling, we have three in favor of tabling, we have two opposed to table. Motion carries, we'll table. Got it?
Yeah, three, two, yes.
You got it.
This is his second time back to us.
Yes.
It is.
I, I think that um, you know, you know, you're, you're sounding like, and I don't mean to be um, going on your bandwagon, because I don't really like your bandwagon right now, but now to think that we're not representing, you know, in our vote to support this uh, lease agreement that in any way we're not considering all of the things that need to occur. But this is, you know, an investment of the company, it's an investment of the city and you can't move forward unless you get those six years, you know, of work done and an investment of this company. So I hope that this will be on the agenda, Mayor, for the next meeting and um, hopefully satisfy the questions of my peers.
So just so that I have a clear understanding of what those questions are, so that I can better prepare um, uh, Mr. Knapp from um, Walden and Jamie and Ray. I, I mean, I, you're asking for the fire department to come here and weigh in on this. I, I can certainly ask them, but I, I don't even think they know what they're weighing in on because there is no proposal yet.
They can read this, you, I'm asking the fire department to make a, to, to offer opinions on the very same document. These are professional firefighters. I'm asking them to offer and weigh in with their opinion on, on, on the multitude of hazards that could be involved with this project, using the same information that me as a layman and councilman am being asked to vote and approve. Do you understand? Yes, I'm sure once you present this to, to the fire department, they will look into this, they will do some thinking about this. They will have some intellig, they will have some very knowledgeable responses to this. And they will much better inform us about a lot of the questions that were asked by myself, by David, by Armand uh, regarding, you know, some of these potential catastrophic situations. What our liabilities are, what the, you know, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So I do think having the fire department here prepared with this document and any phone calls they wanna make to your office to say, give me some more information, then we can make a much more intelligent, you know, decision on, on how to, on, on to move forward with this, you know? I mean, in general, a ten thousand per our city statutes, right? A ten thousand dollar, anything above a ten thousand dollar um.
Expenditure.
Yeah, it's supposed to go out.
There is no expenditure.
There's no expenditure.
We're not spending it.
We're not spending a dollar, this is a land lease, we're being paid, it's totally opposite.
Right.
This is, I think we can move the discussion.
It is different, yeah.
Mayor.
All right, so we'll regroup and um, see what we could pull together to answer Councilman Cavanero, Councilman Oliver's and Councilman Waldron's questions.
Okay.
Good.
Sure.
Got it.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
Thank you for your presentation.
Sure, we'll see you again. Yes, sir.
Item number four, I will entertain a motion to authorize a mayor to act on behalf of the city to award, execute and administer the purchase of a twenty-twenty-three F-two fifty-four by four with plow or equivalent to the Litchfield Ford of Litchfield, Connecticut in the amount of fifty-nine thousand, two hundred and eighty-six dollars. This, thank you, Councilwoman Ruette, seconded by Councilman Oliver. Uh, questions or comments on the motion?
Just for the record, you know, this is um, vetted through the vehicle replacement committee, which I trust Neil is here to answer the, for, for the questions, but I think it's pretty straightforward.
Uh, thank you, Councilwoman. Uh, if there are no questions, I'll call the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Uh, item five, I'll entertain a motion by the city council here in acting as a WPCA to approve the following payment from Fund four ninety, sanitary sewer capital improvement. This is uh, Wright Pierce Engineering invoice for fi- four thousand seven hundred and twenty-one dollars and twelve cents.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilman Minicia.
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Waldron. Uh, questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item six. I'll entertain, uh, excuse me, on the motion of the Small Cities Committee, I'll entertain a motion to approve an additional two hundred and five dollars ex post facto for the work completed at thirty-one Willow Street for an unexpected expense related to plywood under the um, roofing shingles. The current small cities loan is thirty-four thousand four hundred, this will increase this to thirty-four thousand six hundred and five dollars and the mortgage will be modified to reflect the increases further explained in the treasurer's memo dated September twelfth, twenty twenty-three.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilman Waldron, and seconded by Councilman Oliver. Questions or comments?
Uh, yeah, uh, Small Cities Committee met before the meeting. Uh, this is just a very small expense that was added, it had to be done. So uh, it didn't, you can see it's a, so, so I would recommend we approve it and it's already been done anyway, so.
And plenty of equity in that house. All right, questions? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item seven, I'll entertain a, a motion on recommendation by the Small Cities Committee to authorize project approval uh, to F Nan Fido Roofing and Siding of Meriden, Connecticut for seventeen thousand three hundred and twenty-three dollars for electrical upgrades, new roofing and gutters at eighty-four Pleasant Street.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilman Waldron, seconded by Councilman Oliver. Uh, questions or comments?
Uh, yeah, this one was a uh, normal project that we would normally approve. Uh, I checked the property records and uh, uh, there's, appears to be plenty of equity to cover this uh, this amount, so I would recommend we approve it.
Thank you, Councilman. Other questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item eight, I'll entertain a motion by the city council, acting here in his water pollution control authority to approve the following payments from Fund thirty-one WPCA Capital Reserve. Uh, this is to Trevor IDC in the sum of twenty thousand sixty-two dollars and thirty-seven cents. Uh, thank you, Councilman Waldron, do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilwoman Ruette. Are there questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item nine, I will entertain a motion to release the liens listed in Corporation Council's memo dated September eighteenth, twenty twenty-three.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilman Waldron.
Second.
Uh, I heard seconded by Councilman Oliver. Uh, questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item ten, I'll entertain a motion to accept the recommendation of the tax collector and authorize the tax refunds indicated on list dated September eighteenth, twenty twenty-three.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilman Minicia.
Second.
And seconded by Councilman Waldron. Questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item eleven, I'll entertain a motion to accept the recommendation of the tax collector and authorizes sewer usage refunds indicated on list dated September eighteenth, twenty twenty-three.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilman Waldron.
Okay.
Seconded by Councilman Minicia. Questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item twelve, I will entertain a motion to uh, go into executive session to discuss a potential acquisition of real property per CGS Section one dash two hundred subsection six, capital D. Thank you, Councilman Cavanero, seconded by Councilwoman uh, Ruette, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We will retreat to the anteroom.
Is that open?
Vermont, it's everywhere.
Oh, is Vermont?
That was just by Lake Champlain. There's an absence of cell service everywhere up there.
Oh, absence, yeah.
Okay. I need a motion to come back into open session.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilwoman Ruette, do I have a second?
Second.
And seconded by Councilman Oliver. For the record, it is seven fifty PM. I'll call the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Uh, item fourteen, I will entertain a motion to consider business by department heads. Thank you, Councilman Cabaneros, Cavanero, seconded by Councilman Oliver. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Uh, so um, Mr. Drew, I'll give you the floor first.
That's already circulating, don't you worry.
They've been together a long time.
We've been through the wars.
Maybe go through a few more, right?
Never, never enough wars.
As you recall, at the, the last city council meeting that was held on September the fifth, the city councils was presented with a package from one of the residents of Bradford Road. As you're aware, this pole and light in question had come down in a storm in twenty twenty-two. And it was determined that the pole which was located on a straight length of road would not be replaced. The determination was made after an illumination survey was conducted by the Torrington Police Department, which determined there was adequate illumination to ensure safe vehicular traffic. As presented in the packet, several questions were asked and a response requested. Question one, number one was citing several news articles from twenty fifteen and two thousand sixteen. It was asked, where did these lights go? The answer is the city of Torrington has not quietly been removing streetlights. Yes, over the years, some streetlights have been removed and or not replaced. The removals have generally been at the request of abutting property owners. An example, four eighty Oxbo Drive, the owner requested that a pole that had come down in a storm not be replaced. It was not replaced. Or lights were removed because they were not located within the city. An example of that is several lights were removed on Torringford East Street. These lights were removed because they were located on the section of Torringford East Street that is maintained by the town of New Hartford. They're the facts. In article, register, register citizen article eleven sixteen fifteen cited that approximately, this was during the uh, streetlight faster plan discussion, that approximately two thousand one hundred of the roughly four thousand streetlights in the city. That's excerpt from that article. The Republican American article uh, published on eleven nineteen, twenty fifteen cited that close to two thousand one hundred of the city's three thousand eight hundred streetlights are again. In two thousand, in the year two thousand, city purchased three thousand seven hundred and eleven streetlights. The streetlight database audit for September eighth, twenty twenty-three, there are currently three thousand seven hundred and seventy-four streetlights that are maintained by the city. Six hundred and sixty of them, which are located on state roads. The city pays the electrical charge for these lights and in return, the city receives a paltry one thousand forty-five dollars from DOT for these lights. It should also be noted that the streetlight removal plan that was rejected in twenty sixteen would have removed three hundred and twenty-one of the lights on the state roads. Additionally, there are streetlights that are located on private roads and private subdivisions that are not maintained by the city. So the city has not been quietly removing streetlights. In fact, the number of streetlights has increased from what was originally purchased. Question number two was why was the light and pole on Oxbo Drive replaced? The pole number four one oh one located on downward slope of Oxbo Drive. In fact, this was a mistake, that pole should not have been replaced. And while there was, there was, this was not a specific question, it was presented that the city of Torrington is in violation of Bradford Road Lot Covenants regarding the replacement of streetlights. I sought the clarification and opinion of Corporation Council and it is his opinion that neither the easement granted to the Hartford Electric Company volume two seventy-seven, page five oh one, nor the declaration of restrictions and protective covenants for the Dutton Hill Meadows, volume two eighty-two, page zero zero one, require the city to install a new pole and light. Additionally, it is unclear if these covenants are still binding on the property owners as the initial period of the twenty-five years from the initial date thereof dated October twelfth, nineteen seventy-one has expired. So that is my response in regards to the packet that was sent to the council on September the fifth. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Are there questions? Okay.
Thank you for doing the research.
Yeah. No, I appreciate it too and I think um, I, Paul and I and Drake were here in twenty fifteen during that um, rejection of the proposed changes in the streetlights of um, I'm just wondering if there's any possibility aside from threats of legal action against the city, whatever it might be. Can we consider a streetlight being put on that cul-de-sac? It's a cul-de-sac, correct?
It, no, it's, it's a through street.
It is a through street. Short street.
It's probably average length, it comes from uh.
I just, you know. is there any consideration for it based on some of the argument of the residents on Bradford regarding safety and concerns?
Based upon the reports that I've gotten from the police department, there has not been significant increase or change in any crime statistics for that neighborhood. You know, statistically, the the street, the streetlight is not needed. The streetlights aren't intended for lighting up residences. That's what house lights are for. They're inti- intended for, say, to ensure safe vehicular traffic. If the council wishes me to replace the light, I will do that. The cost is three thousand, three hundred dollars.
Well, I know somehow the streetlight issue keeps coming up, and, um, you know, I I appreciate you sort of dismissing the the allegations that, you know, we're not replacing streetlights in your response here because I didn't know. Um, you know, a streetlight goes out, I would imagine you would assess whether or not it would be important to replace, and you are replacing them with LEDs, correct?
So every, as you recall, we did a citywide energy project with fulcrum energy, and we replaced the last, well, like, with the exception of five metal halide lights, every streetlight in the city is LED now.
Which I think is good considering what the, you know, the energy costs or the electricity cost has been. Um, I'm full support of that, but I'm just taking the council's opinion on, and and I don't like to, anyway.
I'm, you know, I mean, like I said, you know, I'm I'm charged with being a fiduciary of the taxpayers' resources.
You also have a much broader perspective of the needs of the city than any one of us, and um, your work is difficult, and you know, I've extended my appreciation for what you've done for the city for the number of years you've been here. So I'm just, um, you know, there there seem to be a lot of passion around this fight, and whether we make a decision based on passion or need, um, I don't, I don't know what the will of this council is, or the many.
Anything else to add this evening?
Nothing at this time, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Ray. This is very informative and to the point.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ray. All right, Jamie, anything to add this evening? Thank you. Anything from the city clerk's office? All right, then we're gonna move into the next agenda item. Item fifteen, I'll entertain a motion to consider business by mayor and members.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilman Waldron.
Okay.
And seconded by Councilman Menicia. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We'll start from the left here. Anything this evening, Councilman Oliver?
No, thank you, not tonight, Mayor.
Uh, anything, Councilman Cavanero?
Just one, a request.
Yes.
Can we get an update at some point about the, um, uh, what do you call it, the audit, city audit, where we at with that?
Yes, so the audit is complete, and the paper copies will be delivered to the Board of Finance tomorrow evening. Yes, yeah. Is that it? Just that? Okay, good. Um, council, or yeah, Councilwoman Ruette.
Nothing, Mayor, thank you.
Councilman Menicia.
Nothing, thank you, Mayor.
Councilman Waldron.
No, nothing, Mayor, thanks.
Right. They're, move into sixteen, I'll entertain a motion to consider opening the meeting back to the public for agenda items only, please.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilman Waldron, seconded by Cavanero, thank you. Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We are back open to the public on agenda items. Questions or comments? All right. Hearing none, we'll move into item seventeen, there being no further business before the board, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilman Cavanero and Councilman Oliver, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We are adjourned. Thank you all very much.
Thank you all.